Mayor Rykel.
Here.
Pro Tim Not.
Here.
Trustee Britnall.
Here.
Trustee Klassen.
Here.
Trustee Flores. Trustee Hanerhan.
Here.
See Furt.
Here.
All right, may we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance at any moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, be seated. All right, the first item on tonight's agenda is public comments. Persons desiring to make public comments on items not on the agenda, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program, or Sheila, do we have any phone calls or emails in regards to non-agenda items?
No, we did not, Mr. Mayor.
I do not show any raised hands, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have anybody?
Nobody signed up.
All right. No one was here for public comments? We're all here for agenda items?
Okay.
Okay. And then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. It contains the minutes of the January 9th, 2023 Board of Trustees Meeting, Resolution Number 6, Series 2023, a resolution supporting the grant application for the Garfield County Federal Mineral Lease District Grant in the amount of $24,359 for a total project cost of $24,359 in order to offset the costs associated with purchasing of new equipment for a new police vehicle for the Town of Silt, Garfield County, State of Colorado. It also has Resolution Number 7, Series 2023, a resolution supporting the grant application for a Garfield County Federal Mineral Lease District Grant in the amount of $1 million for a total project cost of $27,948,000 in order to offset the costs associated with the purchase and engineering for a water treatment facility for the Town of Silt, Garfield County, State of Colorado. And it also has Resolution Number 4, Series 2023, a resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Silt acting by and through its Water-Wastewater Enterprise Fund declaring its official intent to reimburse itself with proceeds of a future borrowing for capital expenditures to be undertaken by the Town of Silt, identifying the capital expenditures and the funds to be used for such payments and providing certain other matters in connection therewith. And number 6 is the Memorial Donation and Gift Policy, January 2023. Would you like to discuss any of those separately or make a motion?
Good. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as you presented, but I'll state the items, number 1, number 2, number 3, number 5, and number 6.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Not to approve the consent agenda, specifically items number 1, 2, 3, 5, and 6, which was seconded by Trustee Seifert. All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do any board members have any conflicts of interest with agenda items tonight?
Nothing here.
No, Mr. Mayor.
None here.
I have none either. Any agenda changes?
None.
I think we should have a great discussion.
Yeah, great discussion.
And we can do that right before the December 2022 financial report?
Good.
Does that work with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Nothing else from the staff, Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Next item on the agenda is Silt's Conservation Value and Priorities with the Aspen Valley Land Trust with Erin Quinn, and I will turn this over to Administrator Laman.
Erin, you want to come up?
Yeah, sure. Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Hello.
Erin Quinn, I'm with Aspen Valley Land Trust. This will not be as difficult of a conversation as your water treatment plan, Leslie. Yeah, I thought it would be appropriate for me just to come down and we partner with the town quite a bit, and so we get the question a lot, well, first, what is a land trust, and second, who is Silt's land trust? So that is us, and I thought it would be appropriate just to come down and give you guys a little one-on-one on what we do.
Awesome.
Certainly not trying to stir up business, or yeah, we're a local nonprofit, so hi, everyone, we're your land trust also. Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of what we can offer you guys as a town as you work through sort of just the growth that's been going on in the region, and the water is certainly a topic, and you know, all that kind of jazz. So if we can be helpful, let us know. A short presentation, who's running that, by the way? Trey, is that you?
Nope, that is Sheila.
Sheila.
All right, thanks, Sheila.
Wherever you are.
Thank you, you can move ahead, please. All right, so this is our service area. The reason why I like to put this on there is because of our name. It's very misleading. We spend not a lot of time in Aspen, actually, but we feel grateful to have Aspen in our service area for the sake of helping to fund what we do, to be frank. And so it allows us to, you know, have some pretty significant fundraisers to help fund conservation in the, you know, land-rich, cash-less, land-rich areas than Aspen. So yeah, about half of our work is done in the Colorado River Valley and about half in the Roanoke Valley. And we cover Garfield and then the whole Roanoke Valley, which includes several counties, as well as Marble. So anyways, you can go ahead, Sheila, thank you. Okay, yeah, so this is our most common question, what do land trusts do? I think a lot of times people think we are a bank, or maybe a mortgage lender, or land title, and Aspen Valley Land Trusts get confused a lot. So what we do, we are representatives of you, of the community, to help you achieve your conservation goals. I recognize the Town of Silt is, you know, a municipality, and it takes a willing landowner to do a successful conservation project, and so I'm not suggesting that these be applied to Silt's ownership parcels, however they're an option, but this is just information for you to pass forward to your constituents and to the region's landowners. So we are, we work with voluntary landowners. Like, never is a land trust forcing someone to do a conservation easement. And it's a tool to allow landowners to take some of their value out of their land today while maintaining ownership and management and being able to sort of do successional planning for whoever's going to own it in the future. I think we've all seen lately that, you know, there's a lack of the next generation of farmers and ranchers, and I think a lot of that is economics. And so this is a good way for landowners today to take out some funds, maybe create some sort of endowment to allow the next generation to have management funds available for maintaining that production on the land. And you guys, anybody in this room, feel free to interrupt me at any time. We're very informal at the land trust, so. Go ahead, Sheila. So what is a conservation easement? Sorry, it looks like that cut off. A lot of that I just covered, but what it takes for a successful conservation project is a landowner with the right intentions. This is definitely not a get-rich-plan. This is not like, you know, you're going to make more money if you want to divide up your land and sell it. Just frankly, that's the truth. This is a tool that if you want, if you're dedicated to your way of life and you're, you know, the land that you have worked so hard to manage and make what it is today, this is a great tool for you then. If you want to stay there, if you want to ensure that, you know, farming and ranching, or maybe it's wildlife habitat, whatever the goal is and the value is of your particular parcel, that if you want to maintain that, then this is a good tool. If you want to get rich really quickly, this is not it. And I think we do lose some interested landowners with that, you know, that little bit of information, but it's just, it's a matter of fact. It's not going to be a successful project. And then something that's very important with this, and yeah, thanks for all your work at the Preserve. You're facing some of this. This is forever, so when an agreement is created with a landowner, it runs with the land. So let's say, you know, the Smiths own the land and they do conservation easement, they decided they're going to move to Montana, and now a new family from Miami moved in, and they're like, we don't like the restrictions the Smiths put on. Nope, sorry, Charlie, these are here to stay. So it's definitely a thoughtful process. It requires quite a bit of foresight.
There's no legal process by which that can be reversed?
It cannot be reversed. It can be amended, but you cannot lessen the strength of the conservation values. So you can't say, oh, when the Smiths conserve their land, they said you could have two houses, and now Charlie from Miami wants three. Nope, can't do it. So, yeah. And sorry if your name is Smith or you're Charlie from Miami, I'm just, you know. Okay, go ahead, please, Sheila. All right, and then this is the next, well, really, the next slide is the question we get a lot, but the financial values, but what changes with a conservation easement? So thank you for asking that. It changes the development and division opportunities of the land. So you can reserve whatever it is you want, but the more you reserve, the less financial value your conservation easement has. And we can walk through a scenario of the finances if you'd like. But you, you know, we're never, we just want to back you into your family's end goal. And if that is, you want to have 10 houses for your sister-in-law and her brother, or whatever it is, that's fine, we don't care. But the more you give up, the more financial incentive there is provided by the state of Colorado. The water rights, so I think it's interesting that we were just talking about water. Granted, we were talking about treated water, but if your property's productivity relies on water, those water rights will be tied to that land forever. And you can change those uses, you can go through water to creek or all that jazz and change those uses. You want to make a pond, all right, go through water court. But what it does mean, it means that, say, Snapple, or whoever, Coca-Cola comes in, they're like, dang, that Colorado rocky, you know, water, I'm going to buy it up. Nope, sorry, that water stays here in this region for this region's use. You can't sell it. And then the other, this is sort of an IRS reg, surface mining. You can't do surface mining with a conservation easement. It sort of wipes out any of the conservation values that the state had paid you for. Now, oil and gas, that's a totally different discussion, and a lot of the times landowners don't own their subsurface rights, so, you know, we have no authority to come and take that right away from whoever does own it. But oil and gas development is considered temporary. So it's, you know, it's remediated once that well or that pad is no longer productive. Okay, so go ahead, Sheila. So this is the next most common question we get is, how does it work? I will come and see, is that okay? Am I like on somewhere? Okay. Okay, so. Hi. Okay, so I put these stars here to act as values just because of my point that our service area has quite a big difference of values per acre and whatnot. So let's just call one of those stars 100,000 bucks. And so the first value of a conservation easement project, so there's three values that an appraisal would come in and appraise. The first one is this top-line item, and that's your land's value today. Let's say you go to the bank, you need a loan to, you know, finance this property you're going to buy. How much is it worth today? All right, we're going to call that 500,000 bucks. And then the next land that says your land's value after it is conserved, that means you've set up your rights. You've set up the fact that you want to have, you know, you live on the property and you have two kids, and you want each of them to have the opportunity to live there too. But you want it to all stay together, or, you know, again, we just back into whatever scenario works for your family. An appraisal will come out and say, okay, with the new restrictions that you've placed on your land, this is how much it's going to be worth. And they use the whole comp process, the same as, you know, any other appraisal, but they go around and find other conserved properties. So in this scenario, we're going to say, all right, your land is now worth 300 grand. This 200 grand, this difference down here, that's the value that people care about. So that is the financial value of your conservation easement. And I say financial value because there's other values, you know, there's wildlife values, there's ag values, whatever it might be. So these two prongs are important, and this one is the most important. The Colorado State Tax Credit Program is head and shoulders above any other program in the entire nation. So the state will pay out to the landowner 90% of that value, of that 200 grand, in state tax credits. So in this scenario, it would be 180 grand in state tax credits. And you're like, okay, well, I don't know about you, but my Colorado State tax liability is not 180 grand. And you have 20 years to use it, granted, but still. The state recognizes that, and so you can sell those credits. And there's a whole market, there's a whole brokerage market out there where people buy these credits on the discount so that they get a discount on their taxes, and now the landowner walks away with cash in their pocket. It's a good deal. It's by far the best program in the nation. It's amazing. And then the other arrow on the right over there, the federal tax deduction, is the remaining balance of your donation. So if you took the full 90% of state tax credits, then you'd have a 10% federal deduction. Let's say you took 60% state tax credits, then you'd have a 40% federal deduction. The state tax credits, because they're sellable, are a lot more valuable. I mean, when it comes down to the bottom line, dollar for dollar, because the deduction is just a deduction in, you know, the income that you owe taxes on. So it's still valuable, but not as valuable as the state tax program. And again, a lot of our landowners don't have, and the federal tax deduction isn't transferable, so a lot of times landowners actually aren't paying IRS federal taxes. So it's not always the most incentivizing program. Does that stir any questions, that scenario? I think that right there is like the meat of it, what people really care about. No?
Not for us.
Okay, yeah, and again, I totally recognize that, you know, the town is not, oh, well, you are a large landowner, but you're not necessarily looking at conserving town-owned properties, but it is a valuable tool to keep in mind. Let's say you're annexing something, or the growth boundary is growing. It's something to keep in mind that this is a tool for some of your surrounding landowners. Okay, go ahead, Sheila. And then, okay, so this is a prompt for me to remind everyone that we just did a, well, we did a regional, AVLT, Aspen Valley Land Trust, did a regional conservation plan as well as the entire state. We reached out to probably, we probably heard back from about 750 of our kind of community members from Aspen to the back. And it was prompted with some survey questions, and it was pretty across-the-board similar responses, regardless of what community you were living in. And people felt that it was difficult to get access to the river, which Silver River Preserve and the Dog Park, the boat launch, is a really good tool here in this town. And then educators unanimously wanted free, safe places to take their kids outdoors. And so we've really tried to start altering that. Yeah, we're trying to buy an island in Silt, so we'll see about that, if, with the hopes of allowing kids to go outside, but we'll see, yeah. So we are definitely a tool that you can keep in mind. Again, we're a nonprofit, so it's not like we have money just to buy an island. You know, we write grants and whatnot, but we're here to help you guys just achieve your growth goals. And yeah, anytime that there's a project that comes to us that might alter, we have copies of, you know, your comprehensive plans and all that. But if we feel like that something that we're about to do might conflict with what you're about to do, we certainly will reach out. And yeah, we're never trying to compete or anything, we're non-competitive, so. Thanks, yeah, Sheila, go ahead. Okay, so that's it, that's all really, I wanted to just inform you guys of what it is we do and who we are, and who is your land trust, that pretty much basics. Do you guys have any questions while I'm sitting here?
No, but thanks for High Water Farm.
Yeah.
Place is great.
It is, it's, yeah, Sarah is a little fireball, and we love her a lot, so. Yeah. Yeah. Trey, do you agree, is Sarah a fireball?
Yeah.
Yeah. But that's a great example, you know, AVLT helped purchase that property and then gifted it to the town, and it's nothing but successful. I mean, that's exactly the type of scenario we like to see happen. We're not always in the best position to own land. You know, that's not our goal, is to be like some huge landowner, so. Yeah, we just want to make sure that our communities have outdoor resources.
I must say, I don't think I did a very good job of introducing Erin when she came in, but I did write about some of the partnerships that the town is engaged with AVLT on, and they've been just a substantial partner in making sure that the River Preserve makes progress toward what we think it can be.
Yeah.
In 20 years, it's going to be, it's going to be, well, it's already a pretty special place, but I think in 20 years, it's really going to be a jewel of the.
Yeah, if any of you in the room or on the computer haven't been down to the Silver River Preserve lately, it's like a totally different place than five years ago. I mean, it's.
It's been better every year.
It's really transformed, yeah, it's beautiful. Yeah, so just anybody, if you have ideas, or, you know, we're happy to be proactive, reactive, whatever it is, and, you know, just let us know if we can be helpful, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I should probably also point out that in the Strategic Conservation Plan, our own Chief Kite made page 22. It's important.
Good job, Chief Kite.
There he is, Pat Nakow.
There he is.
That's at the Preserve, isn't it?
It is, yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next up is the Colorado River Valley Economic Development Partnership, Flight and Free Fall Capital of Colorado Proposal.
Yeah, of course.
It's Evan, and I don't want to mess up your last name, so.
Oh, you don't even need to worry about it. Good evening.
Hi there.
So Evan Zistlis, I'm going to do a better job of introducing. I got so hung up on the last topic, I forgot about the next one. So as you know, we are a partner, or kind of a founding partner, I guess, of the Colorado River Valley Economic Development Partnership. Evan stepped up to help us kind of put that group together. And I think this, and so we've all kind of got in mind this idea of, that Evan's here to talk about. I'm not even going to try to say the name of it without reading it. So I'll let you take it from here, Evan.
Okay, my name is Evan Zistlis, that's exactly how it looks. I'm the Director of Community Engagement for the Aspen Institute's Hearst Community Initiative. So the Aspen Institute also, put into perspective, the name of the organization does not necessarily reflect its interests. So the Aspen Institute was founded over 70 years ago after World War II, really intended to try to prevent another world war. And so we're based in Washington DC. We're now over 570 employees based all over the country and around the world. We have 12 offices around the world, including Aspen. My position was founded in 2020, really to take a closer look, and you could say, for the first time in 70 years, to take a closer look at the communities in our own backyard. We've been here all that time, but we've never really been engaged in community development. And so we really wanted to better understand, and this was before the pandemic, but it launched during the pandemic in 2020. What we wanted to do was take a holistic approach to what would make a more resilient region. So what they did was they sent me out, and they said, go figure this out. Go talk to a bunch of people, go figure out what their interests and priorities and urgencies are, and try to come up with a plan so that we could leverage the Aspen Institute's, the extensive global assets and resources and wisdom and expertise, working with elected officials and non-elected community leaders at every level of community and government around the world. How can we leverage all of that, all of those resources to help serve the communities closest to home? So that's what the Hearst Community Initiative is. If you look at aspintoparachute.org, it's the number 2, aspintoparachute.org, you get a little bit more sense of who we are and what our portfolio includes. My biggest priority was economic vitality. It's one of the four things in my portfolio. The portfolio includes economic vitality, housing stability, social-emotional resilience, and disaster response and preparation. So those are the four things that I'm personally working on, starting with economic vitality. Now, when I think about economic vitality, I wasn't looking at Aspen. I wasn't looking at Pittkin County. I wanted to see where are the economies most ready for development? Most ready for enhanced resilience? So I started in Parachute and Battlement Mesa, worked with their community for about a year and a half, did three town hall meetings with them, culminating with bringing the community leaders from Parachute, Town of Parachute and the community of Battlement Mesa, together for the first time in a while to kind of talk about how they could become more of a cohesive and representative body. Long story short, we started convening elected officials and non-elected community leaders from Newcastle, Rifle, Silt, Battlement, Parachute, to talk about what might economic development look like for your region? And how could we work together, really, for the first time in a while, to think about on a regional basis how we could be stronger? How we could help each other? What would it be like if there was no oil and gas? If there was no energy extraction in this part of the state? What does your economy look like? It's something, I'm going to get this figure incorrect, and Carolyn will probably be upset with me, but it's a very high percentage, it's like 80% of the population who resides here is driving up to Pittkin and Aspen for jobs. So how do we keep those folks closer to home? And how do we make sure that those are good-paying jobs in industries that are resilient and are forward-thinking and are going to be around for a while, that are not just going to boom and bust? What are the ways that we can build the economy in your vision, in a way that everybody feels like they're excited about? That the kids graduating from high school feel like they have a pipeline to post-secondary education and career opportunities that keep them closer to home if they choose to be so? Including opportunities that don't necessarily require a four-year degree or a master's degree? So all of these things kind of come together. What I wanted to do was I wanted to try to create a proposal that everyone would stop and think about and say, am I on board with this or not? So. The culmination of all of those things kind of coming together and trying to think about what are our existing assets and resources, what they say when you're talking about economic development is you're supposed to take your biggest liabilities and turn them into assets. So if the fact that we're undeveloped could be considered a liability, right? There's not a lot out here relative to other parts of the country or other parts of the state. There's not a lot here between Newcastle and Parachute. If we could take that fact and turn it into an asset, use it to our advantage, we could really capitalize on the fact that we are unique in the fact that we are underdeveloped relative to other parts of the state. So what I was looking at was not was on the ground, but the canopy above those communities. What's happening in the sky? So I asked a question. Of all of the people that were involved in the CRV EDP, the Colorado River Valley Economic Development Partnership, and it was all of the town managers between Newcastle and Parachute. It was OEDIT, it was DOLA, CDLE was there, CMC was there, AGNC was there. And we started talking, what would it be like if this part of the state became the Flight and Free Fall Capital of Colorado? And our economies were in large part rooted around aviation and aviation industries. So let's take this, you should all have this in front of you, right? So it's a. So it's a three-phase proposal. We could talk about the, the bottom strip there in a minute. Phase one is really leveraging what we've already got. Really trying to blow out what we already have access to without having to invest a ton of money in something that doesn't exist yet. So, I had a conversation with the Superintendent of, uh, the Three Hundred and Fiftieth, Special Forces Battalion based out of, um, San Antonio, uh, Lackland Air Force Base. He's in charge of the US Military Pararescuer Training. And these guys are basically paramedics for the Special Ops, right? Special Forces. They go in with the Eighty Second Airborne and the Delta, the Navy SEALs. And if somebody needs to be rescued, they're the medical provider in those units. And, and they, they get very specialized training, including, and this is what he said, that they needed. "We need to be able to jump out of airplanes into mixed terrain multiple jumps per day." "We want swift water rescue. We want high mountain search and rescue, and we want paramedic refresher training." Check, 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 check. Went to the, it was a, a national wildland wildfire, um, summit in Jackson Hole in October of this last year. All of the biggest wildland firefighter agencies were there and legislators were there, and they were all talking about the urgency of more wildland firefighter training. Of the, of, all of the varieties of wildland firefighter training. And I asked around, I walked around and I said, "Hey, would, do, do you think that there's a need for more training?" "Uh, yes, yes, yes." "Do you think that Colorado could be a good location for some of that training?" "Yes, yes, yes." "What about smokejumpers? Predominantly done in Missoula and Idaho. There's one in Alaska." "Yeah, see, no reason why we couldn't capitalize on some of that need and, and base a smokejumper training right there in Colorado." "Great. What about the pilots who fly those airplanes that jump, that drop slurry all, all over, uh, forests and those specialized airplanes? Is there a need, an increased need for that, that pilot training?" "Absolutely." So what I want, what I wanted to do was capitalize on the fact of where we are, what we already have access to. All of this is operated out of the Rifle Garfield Airport. I needed to make sure that Garfield County was, um, okay with us asking these questions, so I went to the Garfield County Commissioners. And they said, "We're, this is your idea. We're not gonna champion this. We're not gonna support it, but we're not gonna hinder it either." "You, you have our permission to go do a feasibility study." "Um, you have our permission to work in conjunction with Brian Conde and Fred Jarman. They will continue to, to update you on how your proposal impacts their operations. Don't do anything to hinder what we've, we've currently got. Go figure out what you can find out and come back and report to us and we'll let you know if we like it or not." "And then we'll, we'll give you some more direction." So, so far, that's where we're at. Phase two, transitions to civilian applications year-round. This is more that tourism base, skydiving, uh, base jumping, paragliding, paramotor. Uh, I didn't know what a paramotor was. It's a big parachute with a big fan in the back of it. Right? Uh, different variations of ultralights. You don't even need a, to, to jump off of something for this. All you need is a soccer field in order to launch yourself. There are expos and dem- and demonstrations and festivals for these sports all over the world that draw huge crowds, uh, and some of them year-round. So, tha- that doesn't even include folks that wanna do air tours, whether it's helicopters or just flying around and looking at stuff. And then looking at, how do we make sure that we're accommodating the opportunities for pilot training and aviation mechanic training schools? All adjacent to the Rifle Airport. Check, check, check. The third phase is manufacturing. If we could become an international hub of aviation, would manufacturers of this equipment, some of it is very specialized equipment, might they have an interest in manufacturing some of those goods closer to where they're being used? Right? So introducing light manufacturing, whether it's some of the apparatus or safety equipment, all the way to green hydrogen manufacturing and electric plane manufacturing, which is here closer than you think. So th- those are the three phases of this proposal. Making sure that we are at every stage, working closely with local landowners, county government, municipal government, entrepreneurs, small business community, making sure that we don't leave anyone behind, that we're accommodating, uh, responsible growth. We don't wanna be Moab. We don't wanna be Aspen. We wanna learn from those mistakes and we wanna, we wanna grow regionally in, in your vision. We wanna do it in such a way that you feel like is sustainable, um, to the community that you represent and serve. So when I say base village neighborhoods, that might look differently to you than it does to Rifle, than it might to Battlement or, or Parachute. So, all of this is up to, up for interpretation, but really making sure that we're also in- including in this proposal, opportunities for preschools, for food systems, if, if, uh, the, what's it called? Charles Bar's Operation. Springborn is gone. What opportunities might there be to bring another type of operation that looks at sustainable agriculture and say, sustainable food production as part of this regional, um, development initiative? How are we accommodating transportation hubs, uh, parks, so on and so forth? So, th- it, this is a forty-year plan. This is a huge concept. And the question is, that I'm posing to the, the counselors that represent the communities from Newcastle, Rifle, Silt, Parachute, is, what kind of feedback can you give me early in the feasibility process? Cause what I need to do next is raise enough money for a feasibility study, hire an aviation-specific, industry-focused consultant that can help us understand industry trends, um, environmental impacts, residential impacts, so on and so forth. There's already been strong concerns about aspects of this proposal. And rather than sidestepping them and just trying to get support, I need feedback. Including challenges, criticisms, concerns, questions. I feel like all of those things will strengthen the proposal. And then we'll determine whether or not it's a viable proposal for the region or not. So, the second half of that sheet, you ask here, and hopefully you've been prepped a little bit for this, so that you're not hearing it for the first time right now. What I'm asking for is your personal feedback. Now, you don't have to put your name on this, on this piece of paper if you don't want to. This can be an anonymous thing. I'm not asking you to vote on anything. I'm just asking for public officials to give me their feedback first. I didn't wanna go out into the community and ask them what they thought without asking you first. So it gives you the opportunity to say, "This is what we like about it, but these are the things that we hate about it, or that we would like to see you tweak in this direction or that direction." And then I'll go to the public and do focus group meetings and try to get some, some public community feedback. I would, my, my hope is to be able to collect this from everyone before I leave tonight. I'm happy to stay. So, we can go through some of these things. I think they're pretty self-explanatory. I don't know if you've had a chance to look. I can pause. I'd really like to take questions. I don't, I don't know how much over time I am.
You're good.
Yeah, I think you're good.
Yeah, you're good. We have all night.
We do. We just have to officially extend it past time. I'll leave that up to Mayor Reiko as far as when we fill these things out, but.
I think it's a good idea, other than the airports in Rifle and, you know, the majority of everything you're saying is probably gonna benefit them.
Uh, actually, I thought so too initially. But what I would like to see is sort of a rafting model. So for example, I'd like to, to see this be an entrepreneurial ecosystem, right? I'd really like to encourage small business owners to get engaged and involved in the industries that, that are aviation-specific, but in your hyper-local municipality. So for example, if you have an operation, say you're a small business owner and you're, and you're do a, you're a skydiver, right? And you run this big skydiving outfit and you're drawing from, you're doing marketing wide enough that you're bringing in clientele from all over Colorado and maybe even Utah, Montana, who, who knows? But they know your operation and they wanna go to your operation. So they come to you in Silt. Your operation is based in Silt. There's a shuttle service that takes you to the airport, takeoff from airport. They fly wherever there it is that they're gonna jump out of an airplane from. Jump out of an airplane and wherever their landing zone is, maybe it's in Silt. Right? Shuttle picks them up, takes them back to your, your operation in Silt. So you collect all of the local income from that operation. Turns out, even though the, the, the airport is in Rifle, they collect very, very small amounts of money from things that are just using their airport. It's a public airport. It's not a private airport. I thought it was private. It's not. It's public. So it's, it's designed to serve the regional community of Garfield County. So, if we're, if we're mindful about what you're, what you're describing there, we can all leverage the fact that the airport may be our greatest asset. And if we can all share in its use collectively, we all have equitable opportunity to benefit equitably. Does that answer that question?
Uh-huh.
It doesn't matter if you're a skydiver or whatever else you are. If you're making widgets that are associated with the aviation industry, or if you have a shuttle service, or if you're an e-plane shuttle owner and your company is the, is the, is the company that is flying electric airplanes from Rifle Airport, shuttling people to Aspen Airport, which is something that we're talking about, you could be based in Silt. In fact, if you've got lots of land available in Silt and you've got a beautiful, a beautiful parcel, there's no reason why some metropolitan um, business right now might not want to develop that land for their purposes right here in Silt.
Were you guys involved or were you involved at all, like, pre-pandemic, when the Town of Silt was going through like an ASAP process as it related to economic development? Because, do you remember? At all with these guys? It would've been great because it did essentially the same thing. It looked at our strengths. It looked at our weaknesses. What infrastructure do we have? What do we not have?
I came on board in twenty-twenty, so it wouldn't have been me. Uh, there was a, there was a, um, a study that was associated with the airport in two thousand and ten, but that was the last time Rifle Airport did a study.
This was a little bit more local, just a Silt thing that we did.
This was, uh.
Well, that was associated with the university, was it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I remember you talking about that.
And, uh, actually, Parachute did, uh, the same, did the same study.
So, all of that is, is relevant.
Yeah, well, you're, you're, I think your premise is good. I mean, really, as we look at economic development beyond oil and gas extraction, et cetera, and, you know, the Aspen thing, I don't think we'll ever solve that. I mean, it's a worldwide destination for very well, like, that, that's always gonna be a thing, but.
It's a completely different world.
But the, but the development of like an aviation hub in a way, I think is a great idea.
But if you look at the symbiosis potential for the Colorado River Valley focused on aviation, aerospace and innovation in aviation, the folks that own and operate that equipment, they'll live in Aspen.
Right.
So what I'm talking about is a reverse commute.
Anyway, so.
So if, if there's a, if, if all of a sudden there's a reverse interest from people who live up there in what's going on in the economy down here, now all of a sudden there's opportunities for symbiosis that maybe haven't existed in a long, long time.
No, I agree.
If ever.
Yeah.
So again, this is a forty-year plan, so if, if all of these things sort of come to fruition, now all of a sudden the, the opportunity to transport folks back and forth in an eco-friendly way because everything on the horizon is electric and green hydrogen.
What'd you work on before this?
Before I worked at the Aspen Institute?
No, before you took on this whole project of, uh.
So the first three years, for, between twenty-twenty and twenty, and between twenty-twenty and now, my job has really been to convene elected officials and non-elected community leaders to better understand those communities and to give folks an opportunity to strengthen relations, personal relationships with each other. So I host, uh, the Hearst Leadership Seminar, which, um, Jeff has gone through. Most of the town managers, a lot of the mayors have gone through, a lot of the city councilors have gone through, uh, county commissioners have gone through, from all, from Aspen to Parachute. To get folks together, to give them an opportunity to get to know each other better. And to ask, "What are your personal values and do your, or do you see your values reflected in public policy? And if not, why not?" So it's, it's a chance for folks to get to know each other, and so they wanna work together more collaboratively. Everything that I do, my entire portfolio is, is focused on regional collaboration.
Okay.
So, till now, we've been trying to pinpoint what's phase two. Phase two, which is the next three years, twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-six, is it gonna be about implementing specific initiatives that are focused on a holistic approach to community resilience? If you're interested in that leadership seminar, let me know.
That's cool.
We're, we're looking for folks for our, our next cohort.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions, um, about the survey? Anybody have a, a difficulty filling this out before I leave? It'll stay as late as I need to.
No, like, it won't take too long to fill out.
It shouldn't.
Would you do it right now?
Yeah, you guys wanna just?
And I, I'm happy to answer questions if you, as you're going through it.
So I do have one, one comment.
Thank you.
I love taking things in a new direction.
Sure.
But anytime someone comes in and says anything about getting rid of oil and gas, it rubs me the wrong way. There's plenty of collaboration we can do with electric, hydrogen and gas and oil, so. Anyone that tries to steer, everyone has to go electric, anything like that, I, I don't wanna be a part of.
I'm, I'm glad you made the point. I'm not proposing that we get rid of anything. I'm asking, what is the future of this region? How can we supplement who we are, what we've done? What is our legacy? And how do we take it into the next generation? How do we make sure that we are ensuring a future for our next generation of young professionals that are looking for good-paying jobs right here at home? So all, there, there's nothing in here that says we have to get rid of oil and gas.
But I, I see that, I mean, we can have that in a sustainable natural gas and oil.
No dispute from me.
I think, maybe if I can expand on your point, the way that I took it
Sure.
reminds me of the discussions that we had when I brought up the ASAP meetings with economic development. And it wasn't with like the intention or the motive to get rid of any of those jobs or not support them. I think it was more just the understanding that the trend was those jobs were decreasing in Garfield County and specifically in our area. And based on what we saw that trend being, how can we diversify economic development beyond that?
Right.
If that makes sense.
And if you look at where the, the next, tomorrow's investment dollars, they're actually today's investment dollars, it's all in renewable.
It is.
A, a lot of the grants that I'm applying for are, for example, we're, I wanna look at the Rangeli Pilot Training Facility. The AGNC, Tiffany is saying, "Look, if you, if you can fold their pilot training program, you can be, you can potentially become eligible for a lot of that coal transition grant funding." So what I wanna do is I just wanna say, "All options on the table." I don't wanna be exclusive of, of anything or anyone or any industry. But I'm glad you raised the point. Thank you.
I just like to always make that clear when we discuss.
No, no, you're good.
Renewable energy in this valley, yeah.
Jeff, I'm hoping to get one from you too.
I'm filling it out right now.
Good. Um, and I think we've got some extra copies. You've all benefited. So you're my first focus group. Um, if, if anyone has an interest in filling it out, you don't have to say who you are. I just would love to be back. They're just right there.
Careful.
I don't know what that was. Take two, they're small. Take two.
While they're filling that stuff out, is,
Yeah.
are some of those, like, highlights that you mentioned part of why, was, like, what was the deal a couple of years ago where, like, that British Royal Air Force brought in their, like, giant cargo plane and did a bunch of training over here at the Rifle Airport? Are you familiar with that?
I'm not. Go ahead.
That, that was the Royal Air Force brought over a prototype chopper or a new helicopter that they had developed and they wanted to do some high mountain terrain testing with it.
Hey, you should get in touch with those guys.
The, the high mountain stuff is really key. We've got great relationships. We already have great relationships with United States Air Force, uh, US Army, Army National Guard. Um, there, there's a lot of things going on already where folks are using that airport. They love that airport. And so, Brian is my go-to guy to really better understand what they're capable of, what they're interested, how they're interested in expanding. So I've asked him to put together a wish list for how, what he would like to see go on over there.
Yeah.
But if, if it's approved by, if I understand correctly, if it's been approved by the FAA, they will entertain anything that the FAA approves at that airport.
Oh, that's great. Yeah, well, and I know that the county commissioners have always been pretty motivated to develop that whole area over there, so.
They, they have said to me, um, well, if I understand correctly, Commissioner Sampson says he's been waiting for this for fourteen years. I think that's what he said at the last meeting. Jankowski has some, he, he wants to make sure that we, we thoroughly do our research about impact.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Martin was legitimately concerned about congestion and tourism and development. Um, a lot of the things that, that show up on this survey were, were his concerns. So, I've gotta legitimately answer for those concerns. So I've gotta legitimately answer for those concerns. It's their airport.
Yeah.
And if they, if they don't like what we're saying, so I gotta, I gotta figure out what they would be amenable to.
Yeah, I understand that.
Any else?
Nope.
That's all I've got, yeah.
Thanks so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Thanks.
All right. The next item on the agenda is ordinance number one, series 2023. An ordinance of the town of Silt, Colorado granting a cable system franchise to Comcast of Colorado. Uh, we have a staff request to continue it to February 13th, 2023.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to continue ordinance number one, series 2023 to our February 13th, 2023 meeting.
Motion by Mayor Protam not to continue ordinance number one, series 2023 to the February 13th, 2023 Board of Trustees Meeting, seconded by Trustee Brittenall. All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, this is where we're gonna throw in a little discussion about rates in the water department.
Yep.
If we could start with, I guess, if Amy or Sheila can let us know where we're sitting at right now for rates. I know it's a little shot in the dark because we didn't give them plan to time for this, but, or time to plan for this, but I'm sure they might have an idea.
So I have.
None muted.
Do you have it, Amy? I have the, yes. So right now, our current rates for water up to 2,000 gallons is $52.62. And then there are tiers that charge for more. So between 2,001 and 6,000 gallons, it's 99 cents per thousand. 6,001 to 10,000 is a dollar 99. Then 331, 661. If, you know, it's every 4,000 gallons, it goes up to another tier. Do you wanna know what the sewer rates are or we're just wanting water?
I think just water right now.
Just water for right now, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that on the town's website anywhere?
I think it is.
Yes, it is.
Okay, cool.
And how much is our, how much is our bulk water? Same. Same? Is it the same? Okay, I, I.
Yeah.
I remember.
I can remember.
Yeah, we raised it to where they were paying the same as our residents were for.
Okay, I thought we did. I was just wasn't sure where we ended up at.
And the bulk water goes up to 3% like the rest of the water bills?
No.
Yes.
Yes, going forward, yes.
Oh, I thought we had to change the price of the bulk water each time. That automatically goes up 3%.
You do with your resolution, with your fee resolution.
Oh, okay. So that's included, okay. So 3%. So I think the, the starting point's that 52, 62, obviously, right? And then we get past that and we can discuss how those tiers work. So the most what's the most accurate estimation that we have right now of where that 52, 62 realistically could be going to? Right? I mean, the worst case scenario was that it triples to $148 a month? At a base rate?
No, the original estimate from Jim Mann was $168.
That included the 52, 62, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
So it went from 52 to 168. I don't have the where we are. You guys have any of that?
And I, I looked for it too, but I thought there was an adjustment where it was lower like one tenth. I don't know why I'm remembering that number.
I don't think it ever.
Yeah.
Quick question for Amy. What is our percent of seniors paying? How, how much percentage is senior rates in town? How much population or what? 10%, 20% rates? Just a rough idea.
So we have, as far as trash pickup goes, we have about 920 regular residents and then about 126. So, oh, you know, 12%.
Okay, I just, I'm just so I kinda know for, okay.
So I really, I don't really know if we can even do a discussion. I would just like to see the, maybe the payoff at 65, 75, 85, 95, 105 and see what those numbers will pay.
Really? I mean, I think that that's the best way. I don't know how much, that can't be that much extra work for the finance guy to do, but.
I mean, it's an algorithm and a spreadsheet.
Right. You understand what he's saying?
So if.
So you're wanting the seniors to have a, an even more reduced rate. You don't want it to just be half of what normal residential resident rates would be.
Oh, I don't even know that we're talking about that.
I'm just talking about the base water rate, so the 52, 62.
Yeah.
So to say, say we raise it to $75, well, how much money would that get us in a, basically how much money would that allow us to borrow?
Yep.
And if it was at 80, say $90 and then 105 and then 100, do like $30 increments maybe or $25 increments?
10.
Do $10 increments?
Yep.
There's gonna be a big difference if we jump 25 or 30.
That's 50% on the current rate.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. We had like a crazy discussion one night about like a dollar increase in like recycling fees.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, like, you know what? You guys remember that?
Yes.
I don't know if, I mean, you were probably here, but.
No, but.
Yeah, so, yeah, $10 increments for sure. Okay.
Nobody wants their bill to go up $2. I mean, you know, it's just one of those things.
Yeah, cuz I think it's gonna be different. I mean, person A can sit here and say, yes, I can do 120 bucks a month. Person B might be at 60, so without seeing what that potentially is. And I mean, there's gonna be a number where we, we will get nothing.
Right.
And we need to see if that's even, I mean,
And doing it.
Where that number hits at.
And doing it that way almost like allows us to figure out where that nothing line is.
Line is, yeah.
You know, so.
And I mean, there could be a point at, at 90 bucks, you get a $10 loan, we're not doing anything.
Right?
Yeah.
I think that, yeah, that's the way it goes, I suppose. That's what I was looking for.
Does that clears the water pool now the river?
Jeff's giving us a cross-eyed look there like.
I'm curious, I'm curious what percentage of the population is at each of the different water rate levels currently at, at each of those tiers.
You don't think it varies though per month, I guess?
I mean, let's say.
The average usage is about 4,000 gallons.
So they're all in the two, six.
So they fall in that second tier.
They're all in tier two.
So they're all around 55 bucks.
Yeah, water.
So that's who we would model for primarily.
So like.
But even the senior rates are in that, that usage as well.
Sorry to ask your question.
So just a quick question. So like the car washers, are they still on the tier thing or are they on a different rate altogether?
Well, they're commercials, so they have different, um, EQRs that we charge them. And so their increments are different than residential.
So like that and like the laundromat, all that, that's all different. Okay, I just wanted to verify that, so.
That's a good question.
No, that, yeah, that's a good question.
Their base rates are higher because we're charging them for more water. So like residential, the base rate is 2,000. Commercial, if they're two EQRs, their base rate would start at 4,000 because they have two EQRs. Does that make sense? Do you follow what I'm?
Yeah, that's, that's what I wanted to know, so.
So with, um, I, so I have a, another question here though, but when would be an appropriate time if ever, but we've brought up the idea of doing a sales tax increase vote, right? Because the citizens have to vote on that as a means of raising money for this project through sales tax collection.
I think attorneys, so you answered the question last.
Oh, so maybe I missed that then. Was it not?
You can. The city of rifle did that because a substantial part of their sales tax comes from people who don't live in rifle.
Yeah.
They, however, by doing that, they busted their enterprise and they are now, uh, no longer able to borrow money in their water wastewater fund, uh, without going to a general vote of the people.
So can you just like expand a little bit more on what you mean by like busted their enterprise and kinda how that's holding them back now?
So, well, I don't know that it's holding them back because they, what happened is rifle actually enacted the three-quarter of a cent? I forget. Three-quarter of a cent or a cent sales tax increase specifically to pay for their new water treatment plan.
Okay.
And it's paying the bonds. Silt does not have the sales tax generating capability that rifle has.
Right, it wouldn't. So it, it wouldn't make much of a difference?
Well, the, the, so again, under the taxpayer bill of rights, all debt has to be approved by the citizens with one exception. If the municipality operates what's called an enterprise, it's essentially a business within the town. The enterprise can borrow money without a vote so long as the enterprise revenue is generated at least 90% by user fees. In other words, it's like a business. Uh, the debt has to be paid by the people who utilize the service.
Right.
And once you have transfers from your non-enterprise budget funds, your general fund, into your enterprise in excess of 10%, you lose enterprise status and you no longer are able to borrow money without, uh, without going to the, the public for a vote.
Okay.
And in some cases, losing that flexibility can be worthwhile if a bunch of people from Silt and Meeker and Parachute are paying a big chunk of your water treatment plant bill.
Right.
Silt does not have that luxury.
We would just be increases the taxes on our citizens. So we didn't have raising the, you'd raise the bill.
Yep.
Plus you'd raise their taxes. So they're getting, they're gonna pay for it the same.
I understand, yeah.
Either way. And that's a lot of rifle citizens don't, even when they go to buy something in rifle, they're paying it too. So they might think their water bill's 200 bucks a month.
Yeah.
But all the taxes they're paying too, they could be paying 230, 240 a month towards the water plant. So I don't think that's a good
Okay.
a good way for us to go. I think a, a tax increase to repair roads or something is a completely different thing than it is.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
Water payment. I.
Well, that would be out of the general fund, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'd be a different story.
Okay.
I don't think we're at a point where we wanna try and lose our enterprise status
Yeah.
at the water treatment plant.
Okay. All right.
No, we are able to do some projects and stuff in town, some beautification stuff because we did raise the lodging. And that was, that was the benefit of raising the lodging taxes. We're able to use money from that that can only be used for beautification projects versus having to take that money from regular sales tax. It can come from just that fund there.
No, I get it. Okay.
I have a question. With the EQRs, is it the same price? You know, no matter if you have one, two or three, or does if you have a second EQR, does that, is, does that cost you a little bit more?
Not at this time. We can always, you know, visit, uh, or have a conversation about that. But say it's, you have an ADU and it's 1.6 EQRs, then it's just 1.6 times the base rate.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We can certainly make it punitive, you know, the, you know, the higher your EQR is, the more base rate you're going to pay. That's all part of this conversation or can be.
Yeah, I didn't know if that is some sort of.
That makes, I mean, that makes sense to me. If you're paying for two EQRs, it should be two of the base rate.
It is.
And it is.
So also a two EQR should be 110, is that correct?
Um, it would.
Not just rolling up the extra 2,000 gallons. I would think if you're paying two EQRs, you should be being two base rates. So you get your fourth, that's 4,000.
4,000 gallons at 104 dollars for your base rate, yes.
Pay up the tiers.
So is that how it is, Amy, how he's describing it?
Yes.
Okay.
It is that way.
Okay.
A question for you. We've had, we've talked about this before and you guys, I don't know that you guys know. How is the, we had some meters that were not functional. You know, so as we're talking about, you know, base rates and water usage, et cetera, didn't we have a handful of?
We have a handful every month that don't read, that we are constantly working on whether the meter goes out. It just didn't read, the MXU battery went dead or the MXU itself just went dead.
Okay.
We get a report every month and we are working on them.
Okay.
That's an issue in every municipality.
I was gonna say, I'm sure there's some standard to, to.
It's, it just happens. I mean, meters fail.
Okay. All right.
But hopefully we're not having the same meters over and over and over and over again.
No, and most of the, most meters, when they start to fail or slow down, it's in favor of the homeowner. So the older the meter gets, especially some of the older generational meters that we still have out there in the system. We probably have some out there that you're gonna use 10 gallons and that meter might only register six.
Got it.
Just because of their age.
Okay.
So do we have a, a, a plan to replace old meters at a certain?
There is no set plan to replace them meters other than when they go out or, um, if, we've been trying to replace them as we find them. Or if there's a leak or something of that nature and the homeowner's replacing stuff, we try to upgrade the setter and the meter at that time also.
Okay.
But there's no set plan for us to go out there and try to replace all the meters.
All right.
Okay.
I suppose that's the direction.
That's the direction. Do you have a, the direction you need or do you have any follow-up questions?
Just to clarify, you wanna see how much loan value we could get at each of those $10 monthly increments?
That's correct.
Up to?
Up to $168.
Okay. I can do that.
I mean, that's just what I said. You guys can chime in on that, so.
No, that works.
Well, we know what 168 is.
Yeah.
28 million bucks.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That could have been a month ago's dollars though. Could be different now.
It's a good point, yeah.
That, that analysis while helpful will have certain limitations because your rate structure is not only about paying debt. It has to make, the modeling makes certain assumptions about how much money is needed to operate the system. And part of that is replacing meters and part of that is public works employees and part of that is, uh, the costs associated with operating a certain technology. And I believe that the financial analysis that Jim Mann did, wasn't it put together with some input from Dewberry about the, what, the number of S or FTEs that would be needed in order to run the plant for which they are designing?
Yes.
And so you, if, if Jim models that but leaves that as a, as a fixed variable in the analysis, i.e. the amount of labor and parts and kind of other things needed for the plant that they're designing to, if you say, well, we want, we want the plant that you can build for this level here, that may well have a material impact on what it costs to operate that plant. So just so you understand, it's not going to be a, a perfect.
Right, right.
It's gonna be plus or minus 5%.
Should be close.
Give or take.
I don't know.
No.
It's not gonna be 50.
Probably will not be 50.
In addition to that, we also might wanna consider having Jim take a look at the tiered rates as well because at the 99 cent tier, just having him factor that into your.
I mean, I think the tiers definitely need to change. I know, I've got a family of six and we go over our 2,000 gallons and I have, I, and this is me personally, 99 cents for another 1,000 gallons of water seems very cheap.
It's very cheap.
I mean, that, that, that number, I think that escalator through the tiers also needs to be adjusted greater.
I agree.
I think that would help really cuz the thing is too is, so the community that we're talking about are seniors on fixed incomes. We're worried about them. Well, most of them are probably gonna be in the lower usage uses because typically it's just two people, like Jerry, you and your wife.
We never use the minimum.
You don't use the minimum. So most of those people are gonna be in that lower tier.
Here's the question, I think, on that. They might know it, Jim might know it, but can they even use the tiered structure to determine our ability to service the debt or are they simply going to use the base rate only?
No, in one of his model leans, I believe. No, in one of his model leans, I believe he had the tiered rates in there. And showing what people were paying on the tiered rates.
No, I know.
That modeled what we can pay back, that is part of what we can pay back. The tap fees, we can't account. Only a certain percentage of tap fee money can be added to our ability to repay the loan. But on the rates, we modeled it with all the tiers and the average user and everything. And that is part of what we can use to help pay back.
Okay, good, then that's.
If I remember right, that first tier, he wanted to start at three dollars and twenty-five cents instead of ninety-nine cents.
Oh, for that actually a thousand gallons over.
Yes.
And you go buy a bottle of water and it's five bucks for twelve ounces.
Yeah, we, we can go five bucks and, you know.
And everybody buys a bottle of water once in a while, so.
The, the tiers do need to be adjusted.
Adjusted, yeah.
We had that conversation last week.
Yeah.
And.
Working on that.
Yeah. I mean, I know it's a, is a small amount, but the bulk water, you know, are people paying what we pay in town? Because the majority of bulk water users are out in the county, so shouldn't they pay county rates?
Rates up to that.
Yeah, we raised the rates to match.
To county.
No, they, they pay what?
And ends.
The town.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, raise them to what the out-of-town people are paying in bulk water, yeah. You know, as a start, you know.
Yeah.
That would be, that would be doubling it again.
Yeah, well.
We have been like increasing at bulk water now for like three years, but it needs to go, it was so cheap.
Well, it was, the, the thing is, at least it's now what the same as what we're paying for the citizens, and that's what needed to be a minimum. Granted, there are, they're doing the transporting of it versus they're not, the, the people that are using bulk water, the bulk water's not using the distribution set system, so there's not all the, the costs that they have. Well, but as far as I'm talking about like the water storage tanks and all the pipes and all of that.
If our plant is shut off and down, they're using the exact same system you are at your house. So that water's coming out of the tank through the same pipes to that bulk water system as it does to your house.
Yeah.
So they are using the exact same system you are to get their water.
Yeah.
They just have to put it in a tank and haul it to their house.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, we're not doing public comment during this.
I just gotta question.
Um, we're, we're, do we wanna take public comment?
I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
I'm okay with it.
Alright, can you jump up here to the table and state your name and address, just for the record?
My name's Albert Ferguson and I live two-ten North Valley Drive, and I was just wondering if a person had to move his meter and they had to get a replaced meter, who pays for that meter? Does the city pay for it, or do the homeowners pay for it?
Trey?
I believe we looked at the code two weeks ago. And I think there's an argument that the meter is a homeowner cost.
Why would it be the homeowner's cost?
Because you're the, because it's, so there's a thing called the service line.
Right, we pay for the, from the meter to the house, so you pay for the meter.
Under the town code, it's from the water main to the house.
No.
So then can I dig my meter up and take it with me when I move?
Uh, if you want your house not to have water service.
I mean, I own it, right, if I move?
No, the, the town owns the meter, technically.
No?
Well.
I mean, yes, the customer pays for it, but the town owns the meter. So the customer would have to pay for, you know, repiping and everything.
Let me put it this way, if you don't have a meter on your house, we will turn off your water.
Well, that's my next buyer's problem.
And, and tam- well.
Good, good, good luck selling a house that doesn't have water service.
And tampering with the public water systems, a felony, I believe.
That was nice, now I put my house on, but it's not mine, but it's yours, but I pay for it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, you got direction? Okay.
I do.
Alright. Um, next item on the agenda then is the December twenty-twenty-two financial report, and I will turn this over to Treasurer Tucker.
Mister Mayor, so, um, this is December's financials, it says a hundred percent, but we know that it's not quite yet a hundred percent, because we still have invoices coming in from, uh, twenty-twenty-two that we're still going to be, um, using twenty-twenty-two's funds for. So these numbers will change, um, hopefully we'll have a, a steady number or a more solid number the end of February, maybe beginning of, um, March. But we're looking good with all of our revenues, we're ahead on everything, um, except the irrigation fund, and that was just grant funding that, um, we didn't get. So we did get everything else, um, revenue-wise, that we were expecting. Um, we are below, of course, in all of our expenditures, so we're doing great on that. Sales tax, we're at about a hundred and thirty-two percent higher than what we had anticipated. Use tax is a hundred and forty-five percent higher, um, and we're doing really well, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
I don't have any questions.
I've got no questions, I think, just if our town attorney can just clarify, we cannot, I've had people ask me why we don't just pull money out of the bank to pay for the water plant, it's the same thing, it has to earn its revenue through its billing stream?
You, you can take up to ten percent of the expenses of the enterprise and utilize non-enterprise funds, so generally general funds, uh, to supplement that.
Right.
But once you go over ten percent, you bust your enterprise.
And our expenses for twenty-twenty-two was four point six million, so that's four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which is not a whole lot of money for what we need to accomplish.
Right, that's why we can't take four million out of the bank and put it towards the.
Correct.
The water plant, okay. Alright, thank you very much, uh, next up is the Administrator and Staff Comments.
Can I interrupt?
I don't have any, yes.
With your permission?
Go ahead.
I just wanna ask a follow-up question to what they had asked about the water meter, only because the overall exchange seemed a little tense to me, and, and I don't think it needs to be that way, just because, like, we're, we're on the same side as you, now I know you asked about who owns the meter, and I know you asked about taking it out with you. And I believe that that's somewhat of a rhetorical question, but I think that you asked that question for a reason. Like, why do you ask that? Like, nobody would actually dig it up and take it, but, like, did it stem from the conversation about the water rates, or about maybe some of the water meters not working properly, I'm just curious.
Where it stemmed from?
Yeah.
I put my house on and I had to pay extra to move the water meter when my water meter was perfectly fine where it was. But the water meter was not working properly, so I had to move it five feet of, five feet over. So then in turn redo my whole plan and then pay for a water meter that is not mine.
Oh, so that already happened?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay, so that's not a question that we can answer then? Or like a, that was really a question just for the staff and kinda why?
It wa- yeah, I mean, you're talking about water rates and water meters and.
Yeah, replacing the water meters and stuff. She had to replace her water meter because they moved it and it was an old meter.
Right.
Yeah, so I was just.
And you had to pay for it.
Correct, yeah.
And we determined that that was appropriate per the town code, I'm assuming?
Apparently, a couple of years ago it was.
I will say that I'm, so I'm in the plumbing industry and work up and down the valley, and every municipality we work in, you buy the meter from the town, no matter what, you, you buy it from them, they supply it to you and you pay a, a plumbing contractor to install it.
But you buy it from them, when you just said this town itself owns the meter, but you said you buy it from them.
You go buy it from them, but if the town wants you to change it, they can, that's the code.
Yeah, but you said you buy it from them, so then isn't it then my property?
I don't know how the town code is written, I mean, it's the same.
I'm just curious, I'm just curious, this was years ago. It's to- I mean, it's done, my driveway is now in concrete, my water meter is five feet over. I still pay my water bill, my water is still red, I have a brand-new meter, whatever. But, just very curious as to when I put my new house on and going through ten thousand hoops to put a house on, I then still have to pay for the water meter that's not even mine? So, just curious, just, just curious.
Yeah, I don't have an answer, I, I didn't mean to open that, I was just curious.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I thought it was a rhetorical question, it was a real question, I, I just didn't know the scenario, so.
This has been going on for a while now.
Okay.
So it's, it's, it is what it is, like, if it's town, then where are the funds, could the funds? I mean, you're talking about all this money I get, I don't know how much they are, do you look at the bill? Honestly, I don't know.
Yeah.
And especially what it was five years ago to what it is now, who knows? But if you're talking about water treatments and the upkeep and blah, 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 is this a town thing? I mean, it's, cause if it leaks, at where is it the homeowner's responsibility versus the town responsibility? At the meter, right?
At the main.
At the main.
At the main, according to our code.
There's a main, main water distribution line in the street that has a, a tap on it that goes to your house. And every municipality from that tap to your house is your responsibility.
It, it, I mean, some, some municipalities have it at what's called the curb stop. Uh, Silt, some have it at the main, Silt's code is the main. And at some point, Trey and I may talk for more about that and come back to you all and
recommend a change, but even, even at the curb stop, the meter is between the curb stop and the house.
So the meter still would be a homeowner's responsibility.
So then when it breaks, or it leaks, or the batteries go dead, who replaces it?
The town replaces the batteries.
Yes, in the MXU, the town replaces the MXU and the battery.
Okay, and then what if the meter's bad?
I believe that's the homeowner's responsibility to replace the meter.
So then we call the mayor with his plumbing company to come fix it, like, I'm just curious.
I don't work in Silt, so just for the record. You do, you do not call the mayor, cause the, the mayor's not replacing your meter in Silt, it's not a side gig I got going on.
I think, I think just maybe for further clarification after, I, I bet Jeff and somebody at the town staff would be more than willing to explain all that to you. I don't know that we have the question or the answers.
You're looking at finances and all this of the water treatment and our water to us and blah, 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 blah. Isn't that, I mean, you know, I mean, where, is there funds for that? Cause if it's, if it's yours, but it's ours, we pay for it, you own it, but it's still ours because we bought it from you. Like, you know, just, just, just a question.
I will tell you that that's just a pass-through cost.
Yeah.
What it cost us to buy a water meter from our supplier, that is what the homeowner pays. It's not marked up or anything, it's a straight pass-through cost.
So then you just add it on to our bill?
It depends on the homeowner, some, we have them sign that they add it on to the bill and they pay it off in three months. Some just pay for it right there when they pick the meter up.
Thanks, Trey.
You're good.
Thanks, alright, thank you.
Alright. Alright, back to Jeff.
Yeah, I'm glad we had that little conversation, cause it allowed me to remember what it was I was gonna mention to you. Uh, we have a work session tentatively planned for Tuesday, January thirty-first. Looking at doing a site visit at the water treatment plant. Uh, and also, uh, and then to, uh, respond back here and have a work session. Uh, tentatively from five-thirty to eight o'clock, total time.
Okay.
Five-thirty to whatever time we leave the water plant, and then to come over here and talk about what it is you saw.
And then the water plant tour, is that just for the, the board?
Yes.
Okay, and then back here would be for everybody to be a part of?
Right.
Got it.
And we, um, we, we are, as you know, having public tours, we've had, I think, ten or so folks have been out there uh, last week, and I think we're gonna have another ten this week, hopefully. Actually, I think you said you had.
We had eight last week and we have five this week.
Spread the word.
Been trying.
Yeah, I see it all over Facebook.
I get text messages every day about it almost.
Yeah.
I'm not complaining, I'm just saying that it, it makes it getting out there.
Wednesday at one, I'm going, so come with me.
There's five more spots.
There. How many?
There's five more spots on the one o'clock, one on Wednesday.
Great.
How many do you have at the six o'clock?
Zero, we have nobody signed up for the six o'clock.
Okay.
And there's ten total?
Yes.
Lots available, okay.
That's all.
That's all you had?
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Any other staff members with any updates?
We, um, sorry if I forget it, we did get moved to a level-two distribution system for the town water and also a level-two on the collection sides for wastewater because of our population. The only real change it made, one of our monthly testing, we used to do two and now we do four.
Okay. How many levels are there?
Four.
Four, okay.
Okay. Alright, uh, updates from the board and board comments, trustee Hannah?
Uh, just a brief update for everyone, uh, the SSWM, if, if you all will recall, Deb Wild was out here back in December, I believe, Jeff. Uh, mentioning that the, the Mine Springs related group, they had their first meeting last week at the Glenwood Library. About twenty people attended, um, trustees, I was there, trustees from Carbondale and Newcastle. Newcastle Police Chief was there, and, um, Fire Chief from Glenwood Springs, I believe, is there, but Mine Springs had a bunch of people. I brought up the question, uh, that I believe some of you had, Mister Mayor, I believe you were one of them, about it acting as a pseudo funnel for Mine Springs. Mountain Family Health had a representative there, and she said that they're gonna be involved in it as well. Uh, there's another group called the Red Point Center, I believe they had an article about them in the Post Independent earlier today. They're also hoping to play a role in that. And according to the, what the Fire and Police Department reps said, it's gonna defer about forty percent, I don't remember the exact number, but it was around forty percent of people who are receiving services at the emergency department would be better served by these other groups. So that's sort of the near-term impact that they're hoping to have, is to reduce the volume in the emergency rooms. Uh, and according to the police and fire, they're already working on an SOP for how to make that decision about where to go with them if the ED isn't the right decision. So they're, they're working directly with Mine Springs on that modeling. So good progress on that side, the only other piece I wanted to mention as relates to it, if you recall, they wanna have eight rooms at the existing facility in Glenwood. They sent out an RFQ, they got two responses, one for one point two million dollars and the other for one point seven, to refinish eight rooms. No structural work whatsoever. So, they're gonna be doing that RFQ again, and hopefully trying to bring those bids down, cause that was crazy town.
There's that question about bringing an outside firm from Denver to come up and do some work, cause holy cow.
I don't know, I don't know where those people came up with those numbers, these are literally existing, we're talking like drywall, moving some outlets, maybe a little bit of plumbing work. But this, these are existing spaces and they're not medical rooms, they're basically case management. I'm, I'm gonna go by a saw when we're done here and put in my own bid for that kinda money, come on now.
I've seen you use power tools, no.
That's why I'm gonna get you in there. That's it for me, just wanted to update everyone, thank you.
Alright.
I don't have any.
Press the closet?
Um, I had a couple of thoughts, you know, on the P and Z minutes. Yeah, I kinda feel that, you know, in, in this board packet, we got December's minutes. It would kinda be nice that, you know, and I'm not, and I know there's a timeframe, but it would be nice that, you know, maybe the, the second meeting of the month, if we could have January's minutes, you know, kinda the same month as opposed to a month behind. Just so when we're reading the minutes, you know, things are, things are a little more current for us. And, and, um, and my other thing was the P and Z raise, I mean, we put it in the budget to give them the raise, but, you know, reading the minutes, you know, it, it appears the P and Z, you know, it says they'd like to see what the situation Newcastle and Rifle is, I mean, Rifle P and Z gets paid a hundred bucks a meeting, Newcastle gets zero. It's just a voluntary thing. So, I mean, we put the money in the budget and it, it does say that they, you know, wanted to, you know, maybe put that money toward the water plant, which, I mean, that's, that's fine and good, but, you know, we gave the employees eight percent. So I, I, I think that, you know, P and Z should still get it. And if they don't get it, because that forty-two hundred dollars is in the budget, where does that money go?
So you approved it, it's been appropriated, they got their, they will have their first paycheck? So you approved it, it's been appropriated, they got their, they will have their first paycheck with the $100 on Friday.
Just because they were asked if they wanted the raise or not, and I'm thinking, well, that's not kind of what I had in mind, it was just, you know, give it to them, but thank you, I, I, I appreciate everybody doing that for them, you know, because they are, they are a valuable part of, you know, the whole team here, so. And my next question would be, um, at one time we were doing quarterly meetings with P&amp;Z, is that still kinda something everybody wants to do? I mean, I feel it's important, just kinda so we're on, you know, the same page.
Yeah, I like getting the updates from them directly, and being able to ask follow-up questions. And with all the bigger developments, what was it, Autumn Ridge was the last meeting and stuff, knowing a little bit about those processes would certainly be, I, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, I, I think it's important, and yeah, congratulations to the two treatment plant operators who got the right license. And that's everything I have.
Okay.
Um, just wanna thank everybody, this water treatment plant's gonna be a process, so we just gotta keep focused and work our way through it, and just one week at a time is all we can do, kinda focus on it.
Yep.
Mayor Proto?
No, I'm going to the water plant, uh, this Wednesday at 1:00 PM, sounds like there's five slots left, so if I have you out there wanna come join, please sign up and I'll see you out there.
Okay. Uh, I've got nothing, so I, actually I do, I wanna thank the, the public that came out to join us tonight.
Yep.
Uh, you know, three people's better than zero people.
100%.
Uh, so keep coming, we like to see everyone here every weekend, or every week, not weekend, um, every meeting, and, uh, we'll go from there, we do have a executive session as a board, so we'll, we'll move over to that, um, and then we'll open back up and close out the meeting.
Great.
So we'll take a little five-minute recess.
Right.